Welcome everybody to the regular school committee meeting. We're very excited to be here. We have full house today. It is April 14th and it is 6:01. First, a little bit of housekeeping. On March 29, 2025, Governor Haley signed into law an act relative to extending a certain state of emergency accommodations, which among other things extends the expiration day of the provisions pertaining to open meeting law to June 30, 2027. Specifically, this extension allows public bodies to continue holding meetings remotely without a quorum of the public body physically present at a meeting location, and to provide adequate alternative access to remote meetings. The act does not make any new changes to the open meeting law other than extending the expiration date of the temporary provisions regarding remote meetings from March 31, 2023 to June 30, 2027. Pursuant to Mass General Law, Chapter 38, Section 28, I am hereby informing all attendees that a video and audio recording is being made of the meeting, and the meeting is being livestreamed and run live on the city's community TV channel. Ms. LaFave? You said... Oh, sorry. Go ahead. Roll call. Ms. Feliciano?
Yes. Mayor Garcia?
Here.
Dr. Rivera Colone?
Here.
Mr. Sheehan?
Present.
Ms. LaFave?
Present.
Ms. LeBron Martinez?
Here.
Ms. Tennessee Williams?
Aki.
Mr. Isaza?
Present.
Mr. Wellahan?
Here.
Mr. Collmore?
Here.
Ms. Wilson?
All rise for the Pledge of Allegiance. Thank you so much. Now, Ms. LaFave, sorry about that.
No problem. I request a personal point of privilege, Madam Chair.
So moved.
Thank you. So, as many of you here on the board know, but the public doesn't, I really want to take this quick moment to not only congratulate my dear friend and colleague, Mr. Devin Sheehan, as he's putting Holyoke on the map as becoming the NSBA president for 2025-2026. So for those of you who don't know, NSBA, it's the National School Board Association. So he is the president for the whole US and the US territories.
Thank you. Holyoke is already on the map, and we are here tonight to honor the six great kids from McMahon School. So let's just, it's not about me, it's about these great kids here. So let's move on to that.
Thank you so much. So today, our student showcase comes to us from McMahon School.
We're gonna organize for a second.
Take your time.
There. We're gonna get in a line like this, of course. There. You guys are so good at forming a line. You formed it like we were gonna walk. So thank you so much for having us tonight. My name is Karen McDermott. I am the principal at McMahon School, and we have six amazing cheetahs here with us tonight, along with our music teacher, Mr. Adam Brownshy. Adam has been the teacher at McMahon for 10 years, so he's been here quite some time. He has all sorts of musical talents, but he brought just one of the... Rafflin, our assistant principal, is here tonight as well, and he is going to introduce our...
Hello, everybody.
Hello.
We have six third graders from McMahon. We have Luciana over here. Wanna give them a wave? We have... We have Lenaya. Amelia. We have Kayshani. And Evan.
Super Cala Fragilistic, it's the Aladocious. Even though the sound of it is something quite atrocious. If you say it loud enough, you always sound atrocious. Super Cala Fragilistic, it's the Aladocious. Umpty, umpty, umpty la, umpty, umpty, umpty la. When he does his thing, just even now, he's just a lad. And he can, he knows that we can told me I was bad. Little yellow bird, he's like, see me, and he knows. The biggest word you've ever heard, and this is how it goes. Oh, Super Cala Fragilistic, it's the Aladocious. Even though the sound of it is something quite atrocious. If you say it loud enough, you always sound atrocious. Super Cala Fragilistic, it's the Aladocious. Umpty, umpty, umpty la, umpty, umpty, umpty la. Magic word, and everywhere he went, he used his name and said it goes to clever gen. And he's saying, don't you stop, he's saying my name would be. I think this is a learning, and then yes, the Aladocious. Oh, Super Cala Fragilistic, it's the Aladocious. If you say it loud enough, it's always quite atrocious. Super Cala Fragilistic, it's the Aladocious. Umpty, umpty, umpty la, umpty, umpty, umpty la. When he does his thing, just don't you stop, he knows what is right. The sign, and what this woman bring, you love to say. And you need to listen carefully, the thing can change your life. One, two, three, four, five, girl, and daddy, groovy wife. Oh, Super Cala Fragilistic, it's the Aladocious. Even though the sound of it is something quite atrocious. If you say it loud enough, you always sound atrocious. Super Cala Fragilistic, it's the Aladocious.
Wow, there it goes. They were chilling, too. That's for Thursday. Encore. I want another one. They were good. They were good, man.
Thank you, everybody. Thank you. Come back soon. That was fun.
Oh, yeah. Oh, I thought it was a very...
Yeah?
The one with the pink or the... With the pink, with the pink, with the pink, yeah. My coworker. Right.
Alright. I will say, that was amazing. And I would be visiting McMahon School on Wednesday for Dragons and Marshmallows. We're gonna be doing some science experiments. So that's gonna be really fun, reinforcing the scientific method. I had to. So next up, we have our public comment. And I have four people signed up for a public comment. As we have said before, each person gets two minutes. And I will do it with my trusty sand timer over here for the two minutes. And it's not a conversation. You get to speak. We will continue with our agenda. You're free to listen, but there would be no conversations or discussions. First, I have, and I apologize because of the, I don't know the names, so I'm gonna do my best to say them correctly. Books to me like Kyle Chambers. Come on up, and then please state your name and address before you speak.
Hi, good evening, everybody. My name is Kyle Chambers, 85 Lincoln Street here in Holyoke. Good to see you all again. Oh, is my time started? Okay. Oh, jeez, okay. So my name is Kyle Chambers, and I come to you as the parent of a first grade student at Ian White Elementary School. I am also secretary of the Ian White PTO, and I've had productive discussions with a number of parents whose feelings I hope to echo with my comments here. In discussing Desi's decision to introduce what they call a partial return to local control, I urged the school committee to push back on this as it creates a massive unknown variable in how decisions will be made within our local school system. Desi used MCAS scores as the reason to put our schools under state receivership. And since then, Desi has only failed our educators, our parents, and our students. Our test scores have had minimal improvements because they failed to recognize the socioeconomic and psychological factors... Uh, sorry. Uh, that impact our students. And Desi's messaging around the return to local control has been frustrating, confusing, and inconsistent for parents whose concerns are being ignored. Holyoke is a unique community with unique challenges, and I argue that the educators who work with our students every day are the people best equipped to handle those challenges. As they find themselves at the collective bargaining table, I urge you all to remember that their working conditions are our children's learning conditions. Our students spend a third of their life in these schools, and they, along with their educators and support staff, deserve to have a safe working environment. For me, the educators in the Ian White School know that what my son needs to succeed, and I trust them to tell you and us what they need to build a resilient school system. In Desi's push to partial local control, they're still not listening to parents or educators when we tell them that the extra hour of academics mandated by the state isn't doing our students any favors, or that the MCAS isn't the end-all-be-all metric for student success, which is why you, I, and the overwhelming majority of those in attendance tonight... Can I, I'm almost done. Which is why you, I, and the overwhelming majority of those in attendance tonight voted to remove the graduation requirements in November. Further, as all of us find ourselves under attack from the federal government's war on public schools, this is the time when our community needs to work together to resist those pushes to weaken and privatize our schools. I urge the members of the school committee to fight back and to insist that anything less than full local control is unacceptable. The educators in our schools...
Thank you so much.
Please finish your thing. Thank you. The educators in our schools and the parents of the city of Holyoke will support you in doing so. I thank you for your time.
Thank you.
Appreciate it.
Note that the two minutes is not to censor anybody, it's just to give the same amount of time to everybody. Next up, we have Brandy, and I'm not even gonna try to do the last name. Belachico. Nice. Thank you. Name an address, please.
I'll just stand on my toes. Hi, my name is Brandy Belachico. I live at 10 Smith Street in South Hadley. I'm a teacher with Holyoke Public Schools and a foster parent of a student at Holyoke Public Schools, and I'm here today to ask the school board to make a public statement of support of full local control with no exit assurances, and to express that the Holyoke Teachers Association expects to bargain with you, our school committee. In the five years I've known my child with Holyoke Public Schools, I didn't know her in preschool. She has had eight special education teachers, and this includes last year where she had no special education teacher for the majority of the year. Last year, my general education classroom at Lawrence School only had three students who did not receive special education services, which made it exceedingly difficult, if not impossible, to actually meet every child's needs. We are asking for a contract that is comparable to neighboring districts to increase teacher retention, and we are asking for guidelines that ultimately protect one of our most vulnerable populations, our students who received special education services, sorry. You are the school committee, elected by this community, and it's your job to do what's best for our students. Support local control and join us at the bargaining table. Thank you.
Next up, we have Peter Duffy.
Hi, my name's Peter Duffy. I live at 446 Appleton Street in Holyoke. I've been an ELA teacher at Sullivan School for five years, where I've had the pleasure of working with some of the greatest teachers I know, and I'm inspired by my students on a daily basis. It's undeniable that there are fantastic things that are happening in HPS. But I'm here because I'm tired of looking at the young people in my classroom and knowing that we could be doing more for them. I'm tired of watching skilled and experienced teachers walk out the door. In my first year, a colleague said to me, "I won't learn your name till you've been here for three years." In year three, a district admin saw me and said, "Wow, you've been here a while." And each year, my students ask if I'm gonna be there next year. And I stay, and I got better with coaching and a lot of experience. There's no amount of PD, district mandates, Google surveys that I can compare to what I've learned through experience. The students of Holyoke deserve experienced teachers in the same roles in the same buildings. I say this because the only way we keep teachers in this district is if we can bargain for a contract that is competitive with other districts. The people in this room know better than I do that we have tried everything else, and yet teachers keep leaving. The longer we keep exit assurances, the longer we have a contract that pushes people out. Good teachers will continue to leave for districts with a shorter work year, better benefits, and fair pay, and none of us in this room could blame them. So why do I stay? Because I believe Holyoke is a great city. I believe our students deserve a great education. I believed the mayor when he ran on the platform for local control. I believe that every city and town deserves the right to democratically decide who is in charge of their schools. I believe that a teacher can change a student's life, and more importantly, I believe that everyone in this room, if we work with each other, can change the life of every student in this city. I believe that everyone in this room understands, deep down, that the right thing to do is to tell Desi, to tell the commissioner, "Hands off Holyoke." They have had their chance to try and save Holyoke, and they have failed us. This is our chance to take our city back. Thanks.
Thank you so much. Next up, Nick Cream.
Hello, Nick Cream. 7 Warner Street in South Hadley. I'm an ethnic studies teacher at Dean Tech and president of the Holyoke Teachers Association. So I'm gonna kind of off the cuff it, because Kyle and Pete and Brandy said things so wonderfully. So I've got some questions for y'all. We're still here. We're gonna be here. We're gonna keep coming back. We're gonna keep asking these questions, right? Please, please, hear us when we say that we want local control. We want to be able to determine our own working conditions. We know our students, our classrooms best, and we think that we should be at the table. We know that we should be at the table with full collective bargaining rights. So are you willing to support the HDA members and demand a full return to local control? That's my question for you all. We know this is best for our students. We serve. So what do you all plan to do to help us get there? Because we wanna be in partnership with you, and we are asking today, would you come out publicly with us and make a statement saying that we deserve, and we know that it's best for the students and the teachers and staff and other staff here, that it is best for all of us if we have full local control with no exit assurances? Do you believe that we should have full collective bargaining rights? Do you believe that we should be able to determine the working conditions, which are, as Kyle said, also the learning conditions of our students? If so, then I urge you to push, as other folks have said, for full exit from state receivership. I'll just say it one more time. I'm gonna sound like a broken record. But we know our working conditions best, so let us collectively bargain at the table. Thank you.
Thank you, everybody, for your commitment and your time and effort. Do we have anybody else? Ms. Feliciano?
Sorry, no.
Alright. Thank you so much. Next up, Communication and Reports, Student Reports. Holyoke High. Mr. Sheehan?
If the chair will allow, I just have a general comment. I'm not gonna comment on any of the public opinion because we don't comment specifically on any one public comment. But I just have to encourage the people that feel this way, and it seems like everyone in the room does, and I agree with many of the things that were said tonight. But also, I hope that you are emailing the members of the Board of Elementary and Secondary Education, and you're doing that as well. There's contact on the DESE website, and you're also making your voices known through that mechanism as well. Because it's not, it, I mean, I hear you. I think we all hear you, but it also is making sure that the members of the board, especially the people who sit in Everett every day, hear what's going on in Holyoke. And that's just my comment with that. Like, just make sure that those decision makers also hear the same type of comment, because maybe they're here virtually, but there's no one here in the room today listening to those comments. So I think we also need to make sure that voice is heard out in Everett as well and at the board meetings. So I would just encourage you to access the democratic process that way as well, and make sure that you are submitting public comment for their meetings, and they have different rules around public comments. If you're gonna speak at their meetings, make sure you read the website. It's very different how they operate, public comment. You must sign up, must submit. Like, it's not, you can't just show up. That's my point with it. And there's no virtual participation with it, so at least there wasn't last month. So I would just encourage you to access that and use those resources as well.
Thank you.
Thank you.
No problem. Student Reports, Holyoke High.
Hi, my name is Nicholas Rodriguez. I am the student representative for Holyoke High North. This week, students will be springing into their academies as 10th and 11th graders are participating in a variety of field trips. Students are visiting colleges such as Clark, Bay Path, Westfield State, Nichols, Western New England, University of Connecticut, and WPI. Students in Financial Literacy are going to UMass. There will be an art class trip to HCC, and the theater company is going to New York City. There will be a lot of field trips happening this month. Students with all passing report cards on their Term III report card were served ice cream sundaes at lunch to celebrate their accomplishments. Students in our ELS Academy who are taking intro to health and environmental careers worked with the YMCA earlier this month, and all of those students are now CPR certified. We wrapped up our Holyoke High School March Madness last week and raised $269. Activities included Mr. Maldonado, Ms. Colonna Rivera, and Mr. Bichard being pied in the face, and our principal, Ms. McKenna, being duct taped to the wall. Our March Student Summit meeting focused on our core values. We are respectful, we work together, and we strive to do and be our very best. Students worked on identifying how we see these values in our school and some planning for how we will continue to use these as a school in the 25 to 26 school year. Shout out to the cast and crew of the Holyoke High School musical, Little Shop of Horrors. They put on an amazing performance at our high school a few weeks ago. Thank you.
Thank you.
Nice chair. Oh, there you go. That's what it was.
Okay. So Mr. Kennedy couldn't be here today, but as in true Mr. Kennedy fashion, he sent the student report. Let's see. On April 10th, staff and family attending the vocational Student of the Year Award Ceremony in Mechanics Hall will start to watch Senior Jaden Hilton Gunnerson receive the prestigious award. April Acceleration Academy looks to have a full house and is fully staffed. They may even cook up something good with their math knowledge. We're enjoying Spirit Week, which culminates with a staff versus students volleyball game to end our day this Thursday before vacation. Check out our Instagram account for pictures by Mr. Caracciolo. We had an attendance rate of 98% for the ELA MCAS dates. Thank you, Mr. Kennedy. Now moving on, well, first of all, that was awesome for both campuses. Thank you for your reports. Next up, we have Superintendent's Report.
Thank you, Madam Chair, and I do have a team here in the back that I'm gonna ask to come up to help with this presentation. And Irene, I'm not sure if you could get the presentation up, but the first item in the superintendent report is we talked about the alternative program that we would like to start next school year. And we're here to just present an update. We heard loud and clear. There were a lot of questions the last time we were here. So we wanted to make sure that we had an opportunity to get in front of you and hopefully address all of those questions and get your blessing to move forward with the rest of the planning so that we can get this program going next year.
Ms. LaFave?
Thank you so much, Madam Vice Chair. So just help me understand, because this has already been approved by Desi. It already has a program code. So being that it's a said-and-done deal, I mean, you can present the same thing that was already presented. We're aware of what the program was about, but our decision means nothing at this point, or it's already done. I see the letter. It says, "Hi, Steve. Great minds and good news. Desi has approved the Holyoke application for the new Holyoke Alternative Program." Here's the program code, and it will show us pending until next school year. So when you say you wanna hear so that then to move forward, on what basis?
Yeah, I mean, we got their approval. It doesn't necessarily mean we, like, I don't wanna move forward without the school committee's support.
This looks like it's going to happen even with or without the school committee's support, and I'll tell you one thing. Just, I'm just throwing it out there. Say we say no. What makes you think we're gonna get our schools back then? So at the end of the day, this is a made-up decision, so we have to go along with it, whether we wanted it or not. Do I think the program is great? Yeah, it's a great, it's a great program because it's to help our students that are struggling in eighth grade, you know, moving into the ninth grade and stuff, but I don't know. That's my personal opinion. We could sit down and hear it again.
Yeah, I appreciate those thoughts, Ms. LaFave. But at the last meeting, one thing that I heard loud and clear from this committee is that they would not approve any program without Desi approval. So we went ahead and tried to get some approval from Desi to hopefully satisfy that big concern that the school committee had about making sure that there was Desi approval. And, you know, because of the Center for Excellence that had happened. So we have some information to share on that. There's a section in our presentation that talks about, you know, this not being like the Center for Excellence. But the intent of including that in the packet was really the highlight. Like, you know, this committee asked, expressed that they would not approve any program unless they got something in writing that approved this program and concept, and we went ahead and got that approval. It is, it is not true that if, you know, if this committee decides they don't want this program in Holyoke, that it will still move forward. We, you know, I've expressed to the committee all along that I wanna work in concert with you, and like, this is an important decision for Holyoke, and we would not be moving forward with this program if the desire of the committee is not to approve this program.
Ms. LaFave?
I'm sorry. And just to go on record, the only thing that I said is that I did not want this to become like Center for Excellence. What happened? Because number one, we were sending students there. On their IP, it was saying separate classroom, can't be a separate classroom when it's a separate school. And we were constantly sending all the kids on IPs with behavioral disorders. And I said, "If at that point you wanted to build an added district behavioral intervention school, then apply for it." But nobody wanted to apply for it because it was too many pages and too much for the application. So as long as you got the approval in the sense that this is gonna be considered a separate school, now is it gonna be like...
It's a program, not a school.
Program. Well, it's technically gonna be a school because it's not like the school's gonna be run with other students there. It's gonna be basically for this alternative program, or what else are we putting in there? Anything else? It's just gonna be that?
Yeah, this would be a separate program, not a separate designated school.
But the school will only be for students in that program?
I mean, our desire would be to house it with the Opportunity Academies program, another program that we have in Holyoke Public Schools, so it would kind of be under that family. And within Opportunity Academies, we have the Success Center, we have Lighthouse, we have Gateway. So this would just be another arm of the Opportunity Academies program that we have, and it would have a separate program designation with Desi.
Will we have a different name for the school, or...
Yeah, I mean, that's, it would, it would be part of Opportunity Academy. So, you know, we didn't wanna go ahead and create a whole name and do all that until we, you know, until we had this meeting and got the committee's blessing to move forward.
Ms. Lauren Martinez?
Yeah. I'm sorry. Can we at least we get the presentation and see where we are here at this point? And then I know that we got the package, but it's nice to at least, for courtesy purpose, to have them go.
And I have some guests here, so I'm just gonna ask them to kind of huddle in the corner over there and share a mic, whoever is gonna be going. whoever is gonna be going first and second. But I can start with just framing. I think we kind of framed everything. Irene, if you could move to the next slide. You know, I did share, you know, our main page, which shows our vision and our mission. And I think at the core behind developing this program is that students are at the center of everything we do, which is one of our core beliefs. And one of our core beliefs that every child in Holyoke can and will learn. You know, unfortunate, this program is designed to support some students where this core belief isn't really coming to life. So we hope that this program could help support some of those students. Next slide, please. And you've all seen our priorities. And I think, when I think of this program, the priority that comes to mind the most is providing students access to social, emotional learning, mental health supports, and opportunities to explore their passions. Again, you know, throughout our entire, throughout our entire strategic plan, you've seen little bits and pieces of these priorities. But starting this program and launching it will hopefully live in that priority of supporting the whole child. And I'm gonna move on to the next slide and let our colleagues, it looks like Lori McKenna, Principal at Holyoke High, would like to go over this slide.
And let's try that again. So this program will allow us to get at one of the challenges that we're facing in grade seven through 10, and that's the students who are not ready yet students. These are students who are seeing that they have a history of a low academic performance. That might be a variety of things. Some of that just motivation, some of gaps in learning, some of them not seeing themselves as a learner. Some of that is chronically disruptive behavior. Significantly underdeveloped social and self-regulation skills. And general education services are just not enough to support these students and resolve this. This would allow us to get at how do we prevent these students from getting into a negative spiral? Oftentimes, what will happen, a student who has some of these major challenges, and often it's these three that are bucketed together. And this then ends up with them having a, they fail at something, they fail at something else, they fail at something else. There are no wins. And something like this would allow students to be able to have some targeted supports in a smaller setting. That would allow them to get some goal setting to happen, get some wins, feel like a learner, have that change of mindset, and be ready to be placed back at their sending school. I think one of the things that we talk quite a bit about at Holyoke High School, and I know that Dean does as well, about being on track. And on track is being able to graduate in four years because you're passing your core content classes. And this would be something that would really help to change that mindset for these students. If they don't see themselves as a learner, if they have some of these struggles that get in the way, really helping them to get that mindset so that they can graduate in four years, and us to support them to be able to do that.
We've had this challenge. It's not a new challenge this year. It's a challenge that we've had for the past few years. And we began in earnest last spring with the then Principal of Opportunity Academy, Jeffrey Schmidt, to really think through what an alternative program would look like for students who currently are too young for the student profile for Success Center. Generally speaking, the Success Center is for students who've hit their junior and senior years and are undercredited and overaged. And so Jeffrey and I started a process, and that continued again this year with the partnership with Sarita Gravlin and Felipe Johnson. We engaged students and teachers. We talked extensively with the Alternative Education Department at the Department of Education. And we put together a design team of teachers and counselors, administrators, to really think through what a good program would look like, from how kids entered to how students left, and what they would encounter and experience in between. The feedback that we got from the committee at the last meeting was really important in helping us return to some of the history of alternative education in Holyoke and make sure that we were learning from successes and from mistakes. So that's our process. We felt really good about it. We're actually, the folks at DESI commended us on the amount of revision that we brought to the table after hearing their initial comments. So with that, I'll turn it over to my colleague, Sarita Gravlin.
Marion Courier. There he is, next slide. All right. Hi, everybody. I'm Marion Courier. I'm the Chief of People Services. Nice to see you all. And so like Superintendent Soto referenced at the beginning, and one, an important part of the process was looking backwards and looking at our lessons learned from the Center for Excellence, which was our previous alternative program in the district that did, in fact, house a number of special education programs. There were issues where students were not able to be integrated with their typical peers. And as most of you on the committee know, that alternative program was disbanded. Since then, the district has put a lot of investment in building our own programs for students with disabilities. We have substantially separate programs within the district. We partner with Opportunity Academy, with Lighthouse, and we utilize a number of out-of-district school placements for our students that have more significant needs. So as we were going through this process, we needed to make sure, number one, that we did have that collaboration and received that approval from DESI to be able to create this program that our focus is on students that will be successful in this model, including students with disabilities. I know it's not on this slide, but I want to assure everyone on the committee and everyone that's watching, for any student with a disability that would be considered for the alternative program, that would not happen without a team process. So we do not make any changes in students' educational programs without a team meeting where an IEP is developed, and we would ensure that the IEP developed could be serviced within the alternative program before we would ever place a student on an IEP in the alternative program. We are committed to maintaining the grade level and core academic program within this alternative program, which was another concern that was addressed by DESI about the Center for Excellence. And that we would also maintain access and support for our students to be able to participate in all extracurricular activities, that their grade-level peers would have access to school-related events, along with all access to college and career readiness and planning, which is, we know is very important, especially for our students who are leaving middle school and entering into a high school program. We also will have very clear entrance and exit criteria with that transparency about that process so that it's clear when a student is to enter and what students need to do to then exit the alternative program and return to one of the other settings, whether it be a high school campus or a middle school campus. Thank you. And now I'll turn it over to Felipe Johnson.
Good evening. Felipe Johnson, Principal, Opportunity Academy. So the program has four primary goals. The first one being to address behavioral root causes and prepare students for social, emotional success in general education setting. The intent is for this to be done through daily SEL support, through structured morning and afternoon circles, a dedicated SEL course, and consistent goal monitoring. Additionally, individualized behavioral supports, including a primary person model, which we currently use at OA, check-in checkout system, and regular case conferencing. Additionally, there will be small class sizes and a trauma-informed approach. Students building trusting relationships that encourage self-regulation, conflict resolution, and emotional growth. And finally, a clear entry and exit criteria framework, which you'll hear about later. The second goal is to close academic learning gaps created by low engagement, low attendance, and behavioral disruptions. We intend to maintain grade-level-aligned curricula, which we'll hear about later, targeted academic interventions built into the schedule. And then you'll notice that the schedule has daily instructional blocks that are intentionally scheduled to align with peak focus times to support attention and stamina. And then finally, students engage in monthly goal reviews. The intent here is that student-led conferences to reflect on academic progress, supported by families and staff. Third, the third goal is to maintain student access to health and fitness and the arts. So daily instruction in health and fitness and the arts will be part of the daily schedule. Along with, the schedule intentionally includes creative movement-based courses. We also intend to have some of the electives in science and history courses to implement some of the project-based learning that we currently have at OA. And the fourth goal is to maintain student connection to middle school and high school extracurricular programming. Students will fully be eligible to participate from their sending school. And the school schedule will mirror those of Dean and North and other middle schools to ensure access to extracurricular and after-school opportunities. So I think as a whole, the program is not a punishment or last resort. It's a purposeful, asset-based intervention designed to meet students where they are and help them grow into who they can become. Family involvement is central here, with quarterly student-led conferences and an exit process that includes students and families. And then finally, the program is flexible. It's meant to be personalized and strategic, aimed at supporting the whole child, keeping them and their peers and community and future opportunities in mind.
Mr. Sheehan.
So you had mentioned maintaining the ability for students to participate in extracurriculars at the schools they're being sent from. Please go into how that's gonna be accomplished.
Currently, I mean, with OA, our current students have that opportunity. We actually currently have a student right now that's on the track team. So it's communication with the athletic director at North. And, you know, similar, unlike OA, the schedule will be aligned to the high school. So in terms of having availability and access, that would still remain.
But OA is, the students still fall under enrollment at the high school though, right? But this program, they wouldn't? So they wouldn't be able to participate in athletics? Because you couldn't co-op them onto a... So they couldn't participate in high school athletics?
The program is a part of Opportunity Academy, which, along with Dean and North Campus, are considered a unified high school campus.
So these students would, would they be students at Holyoke High, or would they be students in a separate program?
They would be students at Holyoke High School as far as eligibility for in a scholastic athletics. Enrollment, we sub-enroll students, but as far as the state is concerned, they are Holyoke High School students.
If they're in ninth and 10th grade. Yeah, so if we expand it, we don't want to start next year with seventh and eighth graders, but the goal would be to be able to support seventh and eighth graders.
Okay. And do we provide transportation for those students to get back to their schools for after-school programs?
We would be able to.
So we're creating a budget that creates a bus, a daily bus from this program to any of the middle, or to the middle school or high school?
Yeah, I mean, so it all depends on the unique situation of the student. Some of the students that are at Opportunity Academies utilize the PVTA bus to get to the North Campus, but in the, and those passes are provided to them. But if we do have some students that need to access some programming after school, we, you know, we do have vans that are available to the school, so we'll do everything that we can to support that.
But we're gonna do it, right? Because I'm hearing everything we can. I'm not hearing concrete. Like, I mean, if a student wants to participate in the drama club, we're gonna get that kid from their, from the program to wherever they're practicing.
If that's a need, if that's a need, yes. Sometimes some kids will have their parents bring them, and they don't need our support.
So currently, under the umbrella of OA, it is Transitions Academy, in which they have three vans. Those three vans, based on the time in which they're finished with their activities for the day, would align with when we would need to provide transportation. So there are vans available if there are students who are interested in participating in extracurricular activities.
Okay.
Mr. Willihen.
Thank you. What's a typical class size that you envision?
So starting with, next year with a 10th grade, we're anticipating no more than probably 15 students to start the year. Because the intent is to start with 10th graders.
Mr. Isasa.
Have you established a goal, or are you able to establish a goal as to how many people, what percentage of the students will actually return to the regular programs? If possible at this point, or?
At this point, estimating how many we would want to return to their sending school.
Kind of a goal you have for the percentage?
I mean, I think it truly depends on the success. I mean, 100% would be great. But, you know, if they're in a small setting, there is the potential for students to continue on to success. And if they're finding success in that small setting.
You're telling me that your goal is 100%?
That would be great, but, you know, I think it just depends. You know, it's gonna be a pilot year.
I know it's a difficult question.
Yeah.
Ms. Lauren Martinez.
Thank you for the presentation. So my question, how do we know we have 15? And the second question is, why Holyoke High School? How do we know already that it will be from Holyoke, I mean, from North Campus?
It could be from North or Dean.
Okay, because I didn't hear Dean as much. Okay.
And that's gonna be part of the process of identifying students who fit the profile and having those students start the year. I think the intent is learning from what we did with the previous School of Excellence and learning from that, and starting small, is the intent.
And we have another presenter. Who's up next? Is it Sarita? Sarita Gravlin, our Executive Director of School Leadership.
Hi there. Thanks for having me. Alternative school programs, I just want to name, are near and dear to my heart. Before coming to Holyoke Public Schools, I worked as a teacher and a school leader in the Springfield Alternative School Programs for 13 years. And I've seen how the alternative school programs, how a smaller, more intimate and structured setting has really supported a group of kiddos that struggled in large schools. So I'm here to talk a little bit about the entrance criteria. In the Holyoke Public Schools, we have teams of folks that are constantly looking at data that meet weekly and monthly to talk about kiddos, if they're doing well, if they're struggling, and how we're gonna support them. And every single time our teams meet, there's always a handful of kiddos that are really, really struggling, that we don't have an answer for. And that's what this program seeks to provide a solution for those kids. So in the spirit of data-driven decision-making, the goal for this program is to make sure that we're looking at multiple data points when we're making decisions about who's eligible for this program. We're gonna look at behavioral and social needs, so it might be the number of referrals, it could be suspension data. We're gonna look at academic needs, so it could be kids that are struggling to pass their classes. And we're gonna look at kids that are just really struggling to show up to school and to stay in class. And that's gonna really, that, those sort of, all of those data points are gonna drive our decision-making for who enters the program. And of course, we always want parents and kids to be on board, right? We want them to see this as an opportunity to go and to learn and to grow and to get better at a handful of data points that they're struggling with so that they can return, right? We're looking for 100% so that they can return to their referring school.
Next slide.
Hi, I'm Rebecca Thompson. I'm the Executive Director of Academics. And we have a sample schedule to share with you that shows the students' day would mirror a normal school day so that students are in school for the same length of time as your high school students, your middle school students. The schedule, as Mr. Johnson shared, is broken into ensuring that we are, one, maintaining our academic rigor and students are meeting the grade-level standards so that when they do transition back into their traditional setting, that they're able to engage in the classroom and in the learning in the same ways. The schedule is set up a little differently in that most of our schools actually start with like a breakfast in the classroom morning circle. This will have a heavier emphasis on the social, emotional component. And then we'll still utilize the same curriculum that we are using for our high school math and ELA classrooms. And there will be the enrichment opportunities for students to engage in as well. And there will be the enrichment opportunities for students engaged, to engage in, as well as an opportunity for students to receive what they need. So that could be further enrichment and a push for students who are able to move beyond. And there's also opportunity for intense intervention for the students to be able to close learning gaps, which may be some of the causes for this in the first place. And so those are there in addition to the afternoon circle, where we'll close up at the end of the day, check-in, check-out components.
Ms. Tensley-Williams?
Thank you for coming. Do you have any idea what the breakfast will be like?
The breakfast?
Yes.
The breakfast in the classroom will be the same that the rest of the students in our district receive for breakfast in the classroom.
Do you have any idea of some of the breakfast that the kids have had?
Bagels, cereal, graham crackers, that type of breakfast, French toast, there's juice and milk that comes with it as well, fruit.
Thank you.
Yeah. For breakfast.
Mr. Sheehan?
So if the goal is, a student's here probably about a year, right? Is that?
Yeah.
And they're transitioning back, why not run on a block schedule similar to the high school?
Because a block schedule is not necessarily going to serve the social-emotional needs of the students who potentially are not engaging well on a block schedule at the high school to begin with because of the length of the course. And so it allows for more frequent changes in what they're engaging in, and it allows for those social-emotional breaks throughout the day and learning throughout the day. In order for us to fit that in, the block schedules would not-
Yeah. I would actually say block schedule is probably detrimental to all students that need that type of break throughout the day. Yet we're still doing it and not necessarily caring for the social-emotional needs of all of our students by having the block schedule. So, I mean, it might be, maybe we need to look at the greater problem that we have a poor schedule at the high school by doing block scheduling, and then doing an alternative schedule for this program where we could serve the needs of all students at Hoyoke High School by changing the schedule to meet all of their needs with it. So, are students going to have the ability to access vocational programs or exploratory?
That is not-
Yeah, they wouldn't be able to if they're in this program, no.
So if a student was at Dean and needed to go into this program, they abandoned their vocational training? If they were to transition back, they would have to transition back to the high school then and not to Dean since they would be behind in all of their vocational skills, right?
Depending on when they transition back, yes. Yes.
I think we need to find some sort of pathway with that. I mean, that seems like an ill-thought-out process with this.
Ms. LaFave?
I was going to wait till the end. But, okay, because there's a lot to this. So number one, alternative program, TIP program, therapeutic intervention, it's the same thing. Serena, you talked about the alternative programs in Springfield, right? It's a therapeutic intervention program. That's what you're creating. We already have it. We may not have it, I guess, for the upper grades, but we have it already in our system for middle schoolers. My question is, you're trying to create this whole thing, you keep talking about that it's, it's not going to really be geared towards students with IEPs or 504s, but even, this is why I was going to wait till the end, under your exit criteria, it's achievement or progress towards personalized goals, including IEP goals. That's one of them. So what exactly is going to be different about this program that we couldn't be doing within the school? Because when we're talking about all students, the whole child, social-emotional learning, and you want to bring this, these other, I had them here a minute ago, the curriculum, why aren't we doing that now? All students versus, again, singling out. Because even when you mentioned that Dean students, I knew right then and there, if a Dean student is referred, that's it for their career technical, their vocational aspects. So if they're in the nursing, electric, whatever program it is, that's it. That was something that, maybe that skill was something that they were going to move on with, and now we're taking that away because of verbal disruptive behavior, or whatever. Everything is based around behavior, which at the end of the day, again, we are singling out the students that suffer with mental health. That, to me, is discrimination itself. You're not going to go ahead and send somebody else or refer them to that program. It's going to be students with mental health disabilities. Going right back to Center for Excellence. See it as it is, it's an alternative placement, whether we want to, you know, you don't want to do at a district, I get it, it's costly. So now you're creating this so-called program, which we already have. Should have just extended it and provided it within the schools rather than getting a separate code. You keep saying one year. What is going to be, in my world, is called the care plan? The problem, intervention, and goal. What exactly is it that you're looking for? And how can you say that it could happen within one year? Ms. Gravlin, you mentioned that some students do thrive in these programs. I know for a fact, I know it at a personal. They do thrive. Why? Because it's smaller classrooms, the teaching is more like intimate, like, you know, and the students build relationships with one another. Why don't you look at a program for when students are hospitalized and when they're coming back as that transition model versus constantly pulling within our system? Provide them the supports that they need right now in order so we don't get to that. That's all I'm saying, but.
Does anybody want to, Mary Ann, you want to talk about how this is different than TIP?
So the biggest difference is that the alternative program is meant to service students with and without disabilities. So our therapeutic intervention program in the district is a substantially separate program for students with disabilities who have an IEP that call for a separate setting to meet their special education needs. That program is not available to a student that is not designated as a special education student on an IEP. So that's why we're looking at this type of alternative program, really to meet the needs of students that would not be eligible for the therapeutic intervention program. That's why we're, like, our commitment is to continue to provide those programs for students that have disabilities that need that level of support, whether it be therapeutic intervention program, one of our other substantially separate programs. Again, we have a number of students that we place in our out-of-district programs. So that's how we get at meeting the needs of our students with more significant disabilities that need that type of support. We would anticipate that most of the students that are attending the alternative program are students that are not on an IEP, or students that are on an IEP that do not need that level of special education support that could be in a setting with their typical peers. So that's the biggest difference between the alternative program and a specialized, special education-specific program.
Ms. LaFave?
Ms. Carrier, I truly respect you. I do. And you know, love you to death.
Love you too, Mildred.
But, no, I'm only playing. Let's be a little bit honest here. Number one, a student just doesn't decide that they want to be disruptive and aggressive, verbally, whatever, like, that is just someone who has never had one diagnosis. Maybe it's because it wasn't pursued, okay? Maybe the child hasn't been diagnosed yet, but you can't tell me that it's not there. I've been a psych nurse for 30 years. I understand the mental health world. I've been working in it for all these years. So, we are dropping the ball, because then we're not helping the family to then navigate services that they could get for their child outside of the school to help them with dealing with those behaviors, because if it's happening in school, it's happening in the community, it's happening at home. And families just need that level of education and help. And that's something else that we've always struggled here. We don't help, we don't empower our families. We are not providing them with, do we have parent groups where families are learning about how to deal with disruptive behaviors? Like, some sort of, you know, family, family night? This is, who has a struggling child at home? You know what I mean? And providing them with resources and having a fair with, with the different organizations that can help families, that doesn't cost anything, like the support network. At the end of the day, those students will now get the services that they will need. I just keep going back to the fact that we're trying to say that this is not for a student who has, who has a diagnosis. At the end of the day, they do, they just haven't been diagnosed. Because again, and then we should have been addressed that way from the very beginning, when you noticed it, not wait till it gets chronically disruptive. How chronic does it have to be in order for them to then be referred? History of low academic performance. How long was that history? Are we looking for three-year regression? Five-year regression? I don't know. And significantly undeveloped social and self-regulation skills. What does that mean? How significant? Because then, obviously, that's the student that's getting suspended a lot. To my, number two, if they're having not much disruptive behavior, those are critical incident reports, I'm assuming, because a disruptive behavior better not be this. Right? Because we weren't going to be nitpicking. So what is the level of disruptive behavior? Are we talking about physical aggression? Are we talking about verbal aggression towards others, self-harm, towards self, or harm to others? Like, y'all really need to get the, what it is, your criteria, what is that level? Because if not, we are going to be referring a whole lot more than 15. Your classroom is not going to start at 15. I'm going to tell you that right now. Okay? So, that's it. I'm not going to say no more.
Thank you for your comments, Ms. LaFave. We, you know, we appreciate your comments and, you know, at the end of the day, we're looking for students that we think can be successful and thrive in this setting that haven't been successful in, in their, you know, their sending school. So, you know, I heard, I appreciate everything that you guys said about the Dean opportunities, so that, that would have to be something that we work into our entry criteria, right? That's one of the things that we have to consider before we, you know, send the kid from Dean to that program. But, just like Lighthouse, just like Gateway, just like the Success Center, we are doing everything that we can to try to support the needs of our students that, that are maybe struggling in a traditional setting and that may benefit from a program like this. But we do have a couple of more slides that Rebecca was going to share before we close out. Felipe, sorry.
I have two school committee members who have been very patiently waiting, so I'm going to acknowledge them first, and then you can continue. Mr. Callamore?
Yes, a question I have is, are any of these students being able to participate in athletics?
Yes. Provided they meet the criteria that all athletic students have to meet. You know, it's in the student handbook, in order to, you know, play, participate on any of the athletic teams. You, you know, Lori can get into more details, but, you know, these students, should they meet all the criteria, they'd be able to participate for sure.
Thank you.
Ms. Tensley-Williams?
I'm not trying to put words in her mouth, but Ms. LaFave, I totally agree, early intervention is very, very important. And we cannot wait until they weigh up on the scale, we have to notice right away. Because like she said, at home, charity begins at home and spreads abroad, but early intervention is very, very important. My mom had 10 of us children, and boy, they checked us out early. So that helped me, because in December, I was 80 years old, and the things that I've learned growing up is helping me now in my old days. So that's, you know, let's jump on it, let's don't wait until the kids are just so out of hand that, oh my God, it's jail time. We don't want to do that. So jump in the boat early, anything we can do, I'll come into the schools and help you if you need me. My number's on channel 12, so just call me, and I'll do whatever I can as abuela, grandmother, whatever. And I'm here for the kids. And my motto, you know, is, if you mess with kids, you mess with me. Thank you guys for listening. Thank you.
All right, might have to take you up on that offer. So moving on to the social-emotional learning, we're going to open up with morning and afternoon circles. The point of the morning circle is to kind of set the stage for the day where students are checking in with their primary person, looking at any goals, and just making sure that they're all set for the day. The day will end with the afternoon circle where students are reflecting on their day, celebrating any wins, and reflecting on any challenges that they had throughout the day. In terms of the adolescent and psychology course, we plan to adopt both the Trails lessons that the district currently uses, along with another curriculum called Seeking, sorry, I lost it here, oh, Skills Streaming, that will focus on building those social-emotional skills. The alternative program, we intend to adopt the primary person model, which we currently have at OA, and we found great success with that, along with some of the school observations that we've had with Spring Point, and that's a big highlight, where students have a trusted adult within the school that they are connecting with on a daily basis. Finally, student-led conferences, that's another thing that will be adopted from this program at OA, it's called a case conference. So students have SMART goals that they're setting, both reflecting on their, their wins and their challenges. And then finally, is a behavior incentive system. Next slide, please. And so the point of this system is that we intend to focus on progress and not punishment. Students advance by demonstrating growth rather than being penalized on moving backwards. The focus, the system builds on academic behavioral and personal skills through clear, structured steps. And then each level has specific goals and milestones tied to self-assessment, goal-setting, and leadership. And going through will reflect on positive behavior, personal growth, and self-accountability.
So I talked about the entrance criteria. As part of that entrance criteria, there's going to be some really clear goals that we work with kids and families to set. And those are the goals that we're going to talk with kids about and work with students to make progress towards throughout their time in the alternative school program. As they make progress on these goals, we'll talk about, and the entrance criteria, or the exit criteria. So as kids make, as they're attending school consistently, as their behavioral and social-emotional goals are being met, we'll have, we'll be talking to students about exiting the program. We'll also be talking with parents about coming in and having a conference, and we'll be conferencing with the school. So if it's a kiddo that was a North student and is going back to North, we're going to invite those staff from North to come and meet with the kiddo, talk about their progress and what the plan is for exit. We want to make sure that as kids exit the program, we also are not just, it's not just to stop and go to North, right? We want to make sure that transition is really smooth for the kiddo, so that it's really seamless, they know what their goals are, they know what supports they need when they go back to their referring school. And, and again, I talked about the role that data's going to play here. Data is really going to drive all of our decision-making. So as the data says the kid is doing well, the data that we look at weekly, the data that we look at daily, the data that we look at the kid, with the students, then we'll talk about the plan for exit.
Thank you, everyone.
Thank you. Mr. Sheehan?
So I'll just say, when, when this first came up, my biggest challenge was the differences with this of what the Center for Excellence is, and I'm not necessarily against this idea or concept at all, because I think there's definitely merit and benefits for students that need a different environment. I think there's still the whole issue around vocational education. I also do have concerns about students being able to access extracurriculars, because we were told 10 years ago that students at Dean would have no problem accessing extracurriculars back and forth between Dean and Hoyoke High, and we failed at that as a district. And we failed at that, um, as a district appropriately. Um, we were told there'd be transportation, there hasn't always been transportation. We've gone back and forth with these promises that we make and we don't fulfill. Um, so I think that's something that there'll be an expectation to fulfill that. I guess what I want to hear, and this is probably from Mrs. Courier again, uh, on the hot seat, but you, you were here with us, not in your role in special education when we were dealing with the Center for Excellence. I think you were Principal of Man School at the time. But explain to me how this is different.
So the, the biggest difference is that when Center for Excellence existed, those substantially separate programs that I talked about, which, you know, now is a therapeutic intervention program. Um, but those programs didn't exist in our schools. Those were housed at Center for Excellence. So students did not have the ability to remain in their local school if they needed substantially separate special education setting. Those settings for middle school students were all located at the Center for Excellence. So there was, all students went there. So if you were a general education student that needed an alternative, you went. If you were a special education student that was an inclusion student, um, that could be supported, um, within the alternative program, you went to Center for Excellence. And if you were a student that needed a substantially separate setting, you also went to Center for Excellence. And those students had no ability to integrate with their general education peers. And that was the biggest issue at Center for Excellence. So it would be like picking up our therapeutic intervention program at the middle school or high school level that currently is at Sullivan or at Holyoke High and removing it from the school and putting it inside this program and having those students be within that program without the ability to integrate and be a part of, um, any, any, um, uh, general education, uh, you know, with, with their peers. Um, so that is the biggest difference. And that's what we're committed to maintaining, you know, our continuum of services. Our substantially separate classrooms will remain in our schools where they have been located. That is not going to change. We are going to continue to, um, you know, support students that need, you know, a placement at Opportunity Academy, Success Center, at Lighthouse or in an out-of-district, um, setting. Those things won't change. So that, that is truly the biggest difference.
I think this will be quick in my last one. So why is it then that the determination is being made? And I guess I even wonder it too for OA that we have a separate program code and not work this as a different school. So these students are actually physically pulled out of the high school and put in their own separate school setting when you talk about the technical aspect of it with reporting to the state. Because that's what, I mean, when Ms. Gravelin talked about Springfield, Springfield doesn't keep students in their home schools. They are pulled out into a separate school and it's a totally separate. I mean, the student is enrolled at one of the other schools and not counting in the accountability and data from, in this case, would be the high school or PEC or what, why are we making that? What is the reasoning for that determination?
I would say that that comes largely on the recommendation of the alternative education, uh, staff at, at DESI. Um, that they, um, they really encouraged us to look for a program that was nested within the high school, uh, uh, program. So that's, that's where that came from. And that's why we, we, you know, went with a, a program instead of a school.
And we've had it, why? Like, what's the purpose? I mean.
Well, I think, uh, part of the purpose was that when, uh, we've always considered that, um, as the school committee member asked Felipe earlier, that we want to have 100% of the kids who engage in this program be ready and able to choose to return to the gen ed, uh, general education setting, be that at, uh, Holyoke High School on, on, uh, North or, uh, or the Dean campus. Um, and whether that's after a year or two years, uh, within the program or less in, in some cases. Uh, we initially, when we were looking at timelines, uh, for students, we were initially envisioning, you know, on a quarterly basis, you know, considering, um, return to, uh, to the Sunday campus. And, and the folks at DESI were pretty strong about the experience across the state, uh, that, uh, students needed to have some kind of stability for a year for programs like this to work. And so they really encouraged us to be thinking about return to, uh, after, in, in yearly increments instead of, uh, quarterly increments. It doesn't mean that that won't be an option. If there's students who are ready to go, um, we're not going to, you know, um, you know, say like, you're here and you can't move until next September. Um, if they're ready to go, they're ready to go.
But how would being a separate school prohibit what you were saying about being ready? Because none of the supports would be different. I mean, a student wouldn't even know. They're going to say, I'm going to school here rather than going to school here. So I guess I want to know the technical reasons as to why this is being set up as a program and still falling under Mrs. McKenna rather than being a separate school under its own building leadership as a separate school when it comes to accountability and everything. Like, all those types of things.
Uh, and I'm happy to, to find the answers to that and get that to you all, you know, as soon as is possible.
Ms. LaFave.
Okay, so now I'm really confused. And that can happen really quickly. So help me understand this part. Cause now we're talking, so this program is going to be housed inside of the.
Metcalf.
Holyoke.
It, it will be in the Metcalf.
Yeah. That's what I thought. So, again, separate school. Courier, you said about moving students into another school. That's what we're doing. We're removing, putting them into another school because obviously we're, we're looking at Metcalf to do the, um.
Success Center.
The Success Center and the Opportunity Academy. So however you're looking at it, you're removing from here, you're putting somewhere else. Are you having behavioral interventionists in the school?
Uh, we will have, uh, yeah, we'll have a student support team along with, uh, uh.
Therapists.
Along with teachers. They'll have access to an adjustment counselor, to the, our mental health, uh, partners.
River Valley Counseling.
And, uh, you should know that, um, the supervising principal will actually be Mr. Johnson, Felipe, who will be in the building with the Success Center, um, which is where he houses his office for coordinating the, the OA programs.
He'll be the principal for all of those.
The principal, yes.
Programs.
Correct. Exactly.
How is this still not Center for Excellence? But hey, that's just me. Still have the same type therapeutic, um, behavioral interventionist. The therapist. I mean, it just, I don't know. That's just.
Ms. Sosa.
What I will say is if, if it is the will of this body to move forward with this, um, we could certainly, uh, you know, uh, whatever would make the, you know, we could certainly provide, you know, either quarterly updates or as regular updates as, as you all need on, on how successful the program is. Um, and, and address any of the concerns that come up throughout the year. Um, we don't have to wait, you know, years and years. Uh, we can, we can kind of put some bumpers in place to see like, how is this going? And, and see if, if the committee has any concerns or questions that, that we can have the team address on a regular basis.
I have one quick question and maybe you answered it last time, I just don't remember. How are we staffing this program?
Through our operating budget.
And we have already all the people that we need?
Uh, we haven't hired anybody, but we, we have kind of a staffing model that we're thinking, which, uh, uh, Dr. Mahoney just alluded to and, um, it's currently included in our budget right now. Um, but no, we haven't staffed the program. We haven't found the people yet because we're looking for approval first.
So that makes me think, when we are trying to staff our regular plans that we have done of getting more people in the classroom and getting our small class sizes and doing all the paraprofessionals that we need and all of that. We don't find all the people that we need and we post for a while and we wait and we hope to find people. What are we going to do differently to be able to make sure that we have all the people that we need so that this program actually works successfully in the way that you want? Cause that's like what Ms. LaFave was saying about asking all the people that need to be there since it's running as it would be a school. You're going to need a lot of people, no?
It's, it's starting off really small. So we're looking at 15 kids. So it's not going to be a large staff and I don't think we'll have a hard time. There's going to, there's definitely some people out there that are just super pa- passionate about supporting a program like this. Um, but, you know, I think, uh, the majority of our staffing challenges right now are in special education. Um, and, uh, itinerant service providers specifically, but, um, you know, that, that would be part of the process is trying to, you know, try, making, making sure that we can staff the building. We, we haven't, we haven't even posted the positions or anything like that. I saw a hand up over there, is that? No, I'm sorry.
Thank you, Mr. Soto. Ms. Tensley-Williams.
Um, would it be a conflict of interest? Um, Mrs. LaFave, she has, um, oh, she can't do it too much. Because she has, she's had this for years. She's been involved in this and there any way possible that maybe you could use her for half a day? I'm just, I'm just asking, I don't know. It's good at it, so I don't, just ask.
Ms. Lebron Martinez.
I forgot my question. I'm sorry. No, and it, and it was, I'm, I'm telling you, I, I like, I really wanted to say, and I forgot. Get people jobs here, so I'm like crazy, okay, thank you.
Mr. Willehan.
Thank you. Thank you for the report. It, it was a well thought out, I thought. Um, I think we have a lot of, a lot of questions. I'm not sure whether we want to accept the report and refer it to a subcommittee. That'd be my recommendation. I'm not sure what your timeline is, but that's my thought. I'm not sure what subcommittee, maybe the, either the policy or the leadership accountability and measurements.
Mr. Sheen.
So, I mean, I think it's fine sending it to a subcommittee, but I also think we need to give some, um, ability for the superintendent and staff to start moving forward. Because it's April, I was about to say it's March. So they, so the subcommittee can answer, can dig in and answer some of these like lingering questions. But I think there needs to be some sort of, uh, I hate the word, like provision. There's just, work needs to get done and the staff needs to continue to do some of this. So if I'm going to a subcommittee, I just think we need to give them the ability to move forward, um, on some of it and to start making those plans. If not, if this is going to be something we're going to do for September, if, it won't happen. And I think the point about staffing was like the, the big, big one.
Ms. LaFave?
So this is Anthony, no, sorry, Mr. Soto.
Okay, you can call me Anthony.
No. Respectfully, Mr. Soto, um, no, it's not that I don't think we need this program. Absolutely, we do need an alternative type program. I just don't want another lawsuit, civil rights lawsuit, okay? The other thing is, is, um, is a nurse going to be a part of? You're going to have a full-time nurse in there?
Yes.
Okay. All right, so then we need a motion, what, to, to approve? Hold, hold, Rosalie, give, give me a moment, Ms. Tensley-Williams, give me a moment.
Let her make that motion.
Okay. Ms. Lebron Martinez.
I just want to ask a question. How is it that the center school collaborates with us in regards to some intervention that has to do with some behavior issues? How does that work? Can somebody answer that?
Yeah, I mean, we, we do have the center school as an out-of-district placement for some students and we do, uh, they do offer, they provide us with, uh, therapists and they provide us with behavior intervention specialists, uh, to support the TIP program. I don't know, uh, Mary Ann, if you want to add to that, but, um, they've been a great partner in, in providing us with trained staff, uh, to help run, support and run the TIP program. And they've also been a placement for, for kids that need a little more than, than the TIP program.
You, you've pretty much summed it up. Um, but so, uh, it's the, um, Positive Regard Network, um, is the, is the parent company. Um, so school-based services is one piece of that. Um, center, uh, the center school is a private out-of-district day school, um, for students with disabilities. But school-based services is our partner. Um, and they provide staff to our program specifically for the therapeutic intervention program. So we have staff at Lawrence, Sullivan and Holyoke High North Campus to support the therapeutic intervention program. They provide, um, a floor manager as well as behavioral interventionists. Um, so the floor manager, um, helps, uh, supervise the behavioral intervention staff that collaborates with, um, the program staff at each of those three schools.
I got the question. So do we see many of these students coming into this particular, um, model or?
No, so students that are, that are in the therapeutic intervention program would not be a part of this alternative program. That is, that's, that's not, um, that's not the path.
Okay, thank you.
You're welcome.
Mr. Isasa.
I guess I just moved that we, uh, authorize the superintendent to pursue planning and implementation of this program.
Do we have a second? Ms. Tensley-Williams, seconds. Discussion. Right? All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Abstentions? Motion passes unanimously.
Mr. Mahoney, don't look so surprised. I saw those eyes, you were looking at me wondering what I would say.
Thank you, everyone, for, for joining tonight. Um, uh, the, the net, the other parts of the superintendent report, uh, um, you know, one of them is just an FYI on the middle school work group that has been happening all year and the recommendations that they made in my response to them. So I've included that in your pack for informational purposes, um, only. And we continue to try to plan for a strong middle school experience next year. And then, uh, the, the counselors in the high school did bring forward, uh, a recommendation to change the way we do class rank. So to do away with the traditional, uh, you are ranked fourth in your class or fifth in your class. And to move towards a, a, a class rank that, you know, uh, that groups kids and you are in the top 10% of your class, top 20%. A lot of communities are moving into this direction. I think the, there's a lot of reasons as to why, but one of the biggest reasons is, um, you know, uh, we want students to be collaborative and, and when with class rank, uh, involved, it, it tends to create an environment where it, it's super co- uh, competitive and, and sometimes kids might choose, uh, classes based on where, where, you know, like they might choo- choose an easy class and, and shy away from doing a hard class because of their fear of, um, of, of the impact that that would have on their class rank. So there's a lot of information in there. I am hoping that, that this, uh, could be referred to the appropriate subcommittee so that we could have richer dialogue on it. Uh, but that information is in your, in, in the superintendent's report as well.
Ms. LaFave.
Motion that the school committee vote to move the class rank proposed changes to the Leadership Accountability and Measurement Subcommittee.
Seconded by Mr. Isasa. Discussion. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Abstentions? So moved. Thank you so much, and that concludes your report, yes? Sounds good. So next up, we have Vice Chair Report. Evaluation Plan. Um, this is as part of the. Ms. LaFave?
No. Um, Madam Vice Chair, I, I ask that we, um, remove that, the, withdraw the recommendation. Um, we will be using the current DESI model for this evaluation.
Thank you so much, Ms. LaFave. So next up, we have out-of-state field trips. And we start with the New England Air Museum.
Make a motion. Yeah.
Second.
Seconded by Ms. LaFave, all those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Abstentions? So moved. Next, we have the Brownstone Outdoor Adventure Park.
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion passes unanimously. Next up, we have approval of meeting minutes.
Motion that the school committee vote to accept and approve the meeting minutes of 11:21 and 12:17 for the Finance and Operations Subcommittee meeting.
Seconded by Ms. Tensley-Williams. Discussion.
Thank you.
Mr. Willehan.
Thank you for your patience. Um, these are from 2024, so we're, uh, we're catching up on them. Okay, thank you. Good job, good job.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? So moved. And then we had an order by Ms. Wilson. So I would like to take a motion to postpone this for our next meeting.
Motion to table the order introduced by committee member Ms. Eleanor Wilson at the Receiver Superintendent Gather Information the Following and Present Back to the School Committee at the next
Second.
Seconded by Mr. Sheen. Discussion. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Any abstentions? So moved. Moving on to Updates of Committees. Policy and Governance Subcommittee. That was Ms. Wilson. She's not here today. Anyone from the committee wants to say something? No? Okay. Finance and Operations Subcommittee. Mr. Willihan.
I, she just wanted me to say that
Oh, Ms. Feliciano, go ahead.
Sorry. That the Policy and Governance will be meeting April 23rd. It will be a three-hour one because they wanna catch up onto the policy.
Thank you so much, Ms. Feliciano. Mr. Willihan.
Thank you. See, our next meeting for the Finance and Operations is gonna be in February, April, excuse me, April 17th. This, this Thursday at 5:30 at Central Office. It will not be three hours. I will bring my gavel, make sure it's not three hours. We're talking about the budget. Still have the budget gap that we're reviewing. I know there's a special committee that's also meeting on Thursday that Mr. Soto put together. Again, to address the budget deficit for FY '26. And so we'll be working hard on that. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Willihan. Do we have any updates from the Joint City Council School Committee?
No, not just
All right. Thank you, Mr. Calamor. Local Control Subcommittee. Ms. Lafave.
I'm still waiting to hear back. I did hear back from Ms. Wu, Jennifer Wu, that I should be hearing from Lauren Wu to hopefully schedule an in-person meeting in April with the interim commissioner, who's also the Secretary of Education on exit assurances? I'm still waiting. It was supposed to be hopefully for April. We're almost at the end of April, so I don't know how that's gonna go. Once I hear something, I will let you know.
Thank you so much. Ongoing business?
Nope.
Oh, I'm sorry. I just skipped you by accident. Updates from the Leadership Accountability and Measurement Subcommittee. Mr. Sheen.
Just wanna ask a request to the committee, and I'm on the committee. I, I think we need to meet even if the state can't come to. We, we have a commitment to meet and go over the plan and make sure we're on track. And if they can't come, I think we just need to schedule and, and bow forward.
Ms. Lafave.
So just to, just to set the record straight, the Local Control Subcommittee will continue to meet? The exit assurances was not gonna be at, at the local control.
Oh, that's the separate
That's coming straight here to the full board as a special meeting. Not to local control, but we'll still meet.
Mr. Sheen, you're still up.
Nothing.
No? Okay.
We just got something tonight, so we'll have a meeting soon.
Sounds good. So next up, we had the policy updates.
Motion to table
Second.
Discussion. All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Abstentions? So moved. And we have announcements. Mr. Sheen.
I will make a motion to enter executive session, not to return to open session because discussion could have a detrimental effect on the public body with topics of collective bargaining and non-union contract negotiation.
And for that, we need roll call. Ms. Feliciano.
Yes.
Oh, sorry. That's right. I got
Maybe.
Ms. Rosalie, you start first. Ms. Tensley-Williams?
Yes.
Mr. Isaza? Mr. Willihan?
Yes.
Mr. Calamor?
Yes.
Ms. Wilson? Mayor Garcia?
Yes.
Dr. Rivera Cologne?
Yes.
Mr. Sheen?
Yes.
Ms. Lafave?
Yes.
Ms. Lebron Martinez?
Yes.